Can I have Councilman Mays lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we've got a couple of things on the agenda for tonight. There has been a request from the administration if we could take up the ordinance first. Is there objection to that?
Mr. President, did we pass the rules that allowed for the public to speak on agenda items?
Not yet.
Okay, so we didn't do that yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
But could I get somebody to make a motion on this?
Mr. President, I'd move ordinance 150200 for first reading.
It's been moved and supported, and I'll just go first. We did have a public hearing on this at the last council meeting, but it was an oversight on my part, and Councilman Mays even raised the point. We didn't take action on it for first reading, so that's what we're doing here, so that we don't delay it any further. So this is on Metowannanee Hills.
So we...
Should've taken action for first reading. And that was my fault.
Mr. President?
Yes?
So this first reading ordinance would incorporate the, I'm gonna call it, just for short term, is gonna let them restructure the pay.
Yes.
And that's the one we had been waiting for. I'm familiar with it, and I'm gonna support it. I know copies was on the back for everybody to see, and me personally, or in my official capacity, I'm ready to vote on it.
All right, any other discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 I guess there's no to move the ordinance further.
All right, motion carried. Next item on our agenda, then, is the discussion item 150304 dot one, which is dealing with the move by the emergency manager to consolidate sixty-seventh and sixty-eighth district courts.
Mr. President?
Councilman Kincaid.
I would move the agreement of the merger from the emergency manager of sixty-eighth District Court to sixty-seventh District Court.
Second.
So we've got a motion with support to move it. Yes, Councilman Mays.
Yeah, Mr. President, I hate that Mr. Kincaid made that positive motion, because when we left the regular meeting, this was a meeting that was asked for, and it was supported by Ms. Van Buren to delay it for the purposes of giving it more days for consideration as it relates to disapproval. I don't know if Mr. Kincaid and Ms. Van Buren have communicated, but I would've liked to see they motion not to approve it, and I know that we had a certain group of people who had made the kind of thrust to look at this a little closer. Now we got a motion on the floor to approve it. So what I'll do, I'll make sure that a no vote might be what I have to do, because now we didn't convene, and the first order of business was contrary to what I thought the intent of us gathering for. And so I'm a little offended by that, because that wasn't what we reconvened for here today, seven days later. That was not the intent of the discussion. And I'm like, that's a hasty motion. And now, if we're in discussion on the motion, I wanted to have some discussion and communications from Mr. Ward Chapman and others before I got to putting the motion on the floor. And it's a contrary motion, contrary to the intent of what we gathered in this special meeting for. I don't know how you're gonna handle this, Mr. President, but I did receive communications from Mr. Chapman over the weekend, and I briefly talked with him, and I looked up the Chapter thirteen, and I looked up the MCLAs, and, you know, I kinda read that a little bit, and I still struggle to see the statutory limitations. And so I've asked Mr. Chapman if he can provide them, because when you look at the numbers, some of it is definition, and I know how to read law. I yet to see the specific language. And so maybe he have a copy of the hard language, but as I looked at these numbers diligently, I just don't see what I think is being profit here at this time. And my intent was to disapprove it, take the next seven days like we talked about, have Mr. Chapman and others come before us, because as a council, we have an opportunity to do things that does not affect substantial financial dealings. In other words, some people say it'll save eight million or so in eleven years. I understand what our parameters are. Pulling a jury pool won't cost nobody nothing. I've even had some communications with some of the union folks and the employees. And as far as people who are poised to retire, some, they say, might can start new at the county level, some might can have recall rights into the city, some might can take up to $10,000 in severance pay. And all of those details that the employees are going through, and I'm not gonna be too hasty to approve anything. I know I looked at the emergency manager order number three that Mr. Ambrose tendered to us, and I asked, and I read more about that. Our subpoena power, power over the council and mayor, I don't see Ms. Natasha Henderson here, and under four thirty-six, it looked like Mr. Ambrose have given her his power. And so he's here, but she's not here. And so I'm looking at all of what then went on and transpired over the weekend. And so remember, when I asked Mr. Ambrose about the emergency manager order number three, city administrator, he said that I want you to look at it a little more, and once you look at it a little more, I'll discuss it. He's here, I'm gonna be ready to discuss it, but I really don't like to be handicapped under Roberts' rules on a motion that I think was a little premature, depending on how we got here. And the person who I concurred with in order to get us here was Mrs. Van Buren. She supported this motion to approve, and we haven't even had a legitimate discussion yet. So I don't know if Mr. Kincaid and Ms. Van Buren would wanna withdraw that motion, but I think that's a little premature, as we still try to gather pertinent information from stuff we got this weekend.
Councilman, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a number of questions. Could Ms. Chapman?
This is kind of just moving forward, so that nobody, one person monopolizes all of the time. Why don't we try to limit our comments, and this is for everybody, to about five minutes per person? I'll keep the time here, and then we'll roll through like we did on how we got here. We did that in the same type of fashion, so...
Mr. President...
If you can get me to a question, and...
Mr. President, I probably can get through a question in five minutes, but as you set these parameters up, and then people getting the floor calling for the question, Mr. President, I just don't like to be boxed into a motion, and then somebody can get the floor and call for a question, Mr. President. I know how this thing go. And in order for me to check on jury pools and employees, I don't wanna be boxed in the five minutes. Judge Ull wasn't boxed in the five minutes, the county commissioners wasn't boxed in the five minutes, I doubt if Mr. Ambrose was boxed in the five minutes. So now you got nine council people boxed into a five-minute discussion on getting rid of one of our greatest assets, which has been the sixty-eighth District Court for years in past and years to come. So I hope don't nobody call for the question. I hope that the five minutes you give me circles back around for another five minutes, and if I see those type of things happening, don't know what then been planned here, I hope five of us do what we need to do in order to get seven more days to put our best foot forward for the sixty-eighth District Court employees and the people who will be serviced in the city of Flint by the sixty-eighth District Court. Mr. Chapman, could you approach the mic? Good evening, Mr. Chapman.
Good evening, Councilman.
Mr. Chapman, you tendered a memorandum. It's called a confidential communication between attorney and client, and it's privileged, as such may not be divulged, distributed, disseminated without approval of the Department of Law. I didn't have the opportunity to deal with nobody in the Department of Law. Now we have Mr. Chair up here. I've got outside attorneys and consultants. But what I did, I pulled up MCLA six hundred point thirteen oh one A, one C. I pulled up six hundred point thirteen oh seven A, one A, and six hundred thirteen twenty-one two. And when I reviewed those particular laws, and, you know, they are kind of similar to Chapter thirteen, the prior sections mentioned in the act. I'm asking you, Mr. Chapman, do you have hard copies of those sections that you can tender to me now?
Well, I have copies of those sections through you, Mr. President, to Councilman Mays. I have hard copies of those sections, but I just have them here in my file. I didn't bring them to pass out. I can certainly, I guess, get some copies made, but I don't have them...
Mr. President, would you be opposed to us taking a five-minute recess, 'cause we have a copy machine, Mr. Chapman, and I read pretty good. And when I looked at them, I didn't see what you seen, so I think it's very important for us to look at the hard copies. Could we recess for five minutes and get some copies?
Why don't you ask your questions, and if he has copies, we can maybe get them made while you're asking your questions.
My question is that I didn't see what he tendered to us. I've already looked at them. I wanna make sure that what I pulled up is what he's looking at. I want him to tell me it's got to be, the closest I seen was thirteen twenty-one two. Do you wanna read that to me, or let me look at your copy, Mr. Chapman?
Sure.
Okay, which one? Read it or look at it?
Well, I think what I'll do is, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, if I might, let me, let me just make go...
Point of information, did you say while we're asking the question, somebody will be making the copies?
Right, I'm waiting for the question still.
I've already asked. So I'm wondering, is the copy's gonna be made, because I'm handicapped without it. I mean, he read law, I read law. But I'm listening, and we gonna still need the copies, Mr. President. I'm listening.
Mr. President, through you to Councilman Mays, the memo that has been distributed to you referred generally to Chapter thirteen of the Revised Judicature Act, which governs the drawing of jury panels. And that's a statute, those are statutory provisions, so obviously, we're not in a position, in a memorandum of understanding between the city and the county, to say it's going to be somehow different from that. What's in the statute is what would govern. There's several sections in there, and it's a long, it's kind of a drawn-out process, where they start with a very large number, and they use a key number to gradually reduce it down to a more manageable level and so forth. But let me focus on, I think, probably three provisions. We start with Section thirteen ten, and all of these are in the Revised Judicature Act, where everything starts with six hundred, six hundred point thirteen ten. And that's the start of the process, and I'm reading now from the first sentence. "The Secretary of State shall transmit annually before April fifteen to the clerk of each county, at no expense, a full, current, and accurate copy of a list that combines the driver's license list and personal identification cardholder list pertaining to persons residing in the county." So we start with a countywide list.
Mr. President, if I may point of...
We're gonna let him finish.
He didn't cite thirteen ten in the memo. I looked at it over the weekend, and I know exactly what he's talking about, but he's, it would never cite it.
Councilman, we're gonna let him finish, and if you've got some follow-up afterwards, then you can do that at the appropriate time. But he's responding in the way that he sees fit to your question. If it isn't to your satisfaction, when it's your turn to ask a question again, then you can ask a question about the way he responded. But until he's done responding, we're not going to interrupt fifteen minutes.
So you don't want a point of information to make sure I ain't missing something?
Give him the opportunity that you were given, to talk uninterrupted for now probably close to fifteen minutes.
Mr. President, enough is enough. You don't chastise me.
We're gonna move forward.
Point of information is always proper if I wanna see if I'm missing something.
If you don't wanna understand what point of information is, then we know that's ignorant. So don't talk to me like I don't know what Roberts' rules is. Yeah, point of information
is in order.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
So we start...
Please continue.
So we start with a countywide list that the Secretary of State sends to the clerk of each county. A second provision that I think is important is thirteen oh seven A, and it states the qualifications to be a juror. And again, I can just start, I think, with just the first subsection, the first subparagraph will tell the story. "To qualify as a juror, a person shall meet all of the following criteria. A, be a citizen of the United States, eighteen years of age or older, and a resident in the county for which the person is selected. And in the case of a district court in districts of the second and third class, be a resident of the district." That says it all. It says you need to be a resident of the county, but in a district of the second and third class, you also need to be a resident of the district, of the district court. But the consolidated district, if it were to come into being, is not a district of the second or third class. It would be a district of the first class, and therefore, you're still at the countywide list. And if there was some uncertainty about that, which I don't know why there would be, but if there were, then a section that Councilman Mays referred to, Section thirteen twenty-one, parentheses two, and it's still taught, in parentheses one, they're talking about continuing to process this countywide list. And then they say in subsection two, "The Board," and the Board, by the way, is the jury board, "the Board shall make an additional list," that's an additional list to this countywide list, "consisting of the names on the second jury list segregated by the geographical area of the jurisdiction of each district court district." Each district court district. So the point is, there's a refinement there that takes place to make an additional list, additional to the countywide list, to have a list for each district court district. But you remember, back when they talked about the qualifications of a jury, they didn't mention a first-class district. If you applied this, you would still have a countywide list, because the consolidated district for the sixty-seventh and sixty-eighth districts would be the county. That would be the jurisdiction of that district. So I think those three provisions together make it clear that you start the whole process with a countywide list, and if you are a first-class district, you never move beyond that. You still have a countywide list, and you have a countywide list for the simple reason that the district itself is countywide. So I think those statutory provisions pretty well tell the story.
Mr. President...
Ms. Donahue, can you please get a copy of those and go and make, how many people want a copy?
I do.
We've got four people that want a copy.
Mr. President...
Your time has expired. We're gonna move on to the next one.
My time expired in his five minutes of answering the questions?
Yes, it did.
I don't agree with that, because there's some language in there about that list being approved and submitted to the Supreme Court.
When we get back around, and others have had an opportunity, you can bring that up.
Okay, fine. I'll wait till others have an opportunity.
Councilman Kincaid, I had you on the list.
No, I'm good for now, and work your way around.
Is there anybody else that has not had an opportunity? Councilman Mays.
Mr. Chapman, there's some language in there that talks about, whatever we do, we submit it to the Supreme Court aspect for approval. You familiar with that?
Well, I'm not sure what you say, "we submit it." There is a provision for the courts, not the city or the county, the courts, to submit a plan to the Supreme Court for approval, and that plan deals with things like juror convenience, trying to have your processes be more rather than less convenient for juries and that sort of thing.
I missed it.
It does not, it does not get you into having your pool drawn from some different geographic area. And the statute, and part of Chapter thirteen, by the way, is a statutory provision, Section thirteen fifty-five, which says that anything not governed by this chapter is governed by Supreme Court rules. The point of the legislature is trying to make is that if they say something, that governs. And I think in the sections I said earlier, you can see that you have a countywide jury pool.
Mr. Chapman, it would make it quicker if you would, like, answer the question. And it's, in fact, the plan that's submitted has to be approved by the Supreme Court. You talked about the second and third type of language. When we had the sixty-eighth District Court, the same language that you read was there then, but the sixty-eighth District Court, until we came up with this combination, was either a second or third type of district court. I clearly read and understand that as well. And then, the geographical aspect that you're referring to, that we submit to the Supreme Court, one of the factors is mileage, 'cause we pay mileage. Isn't it, in fact, one of the factors, mileage?
There is a mileage, there is a mileage. It's paid to jurors.
That's a fact. So when we submit that plan to the Supreme Court, if we submitted a plan that said we didn't want people to have to drive all the way from Grand Blank, and it would be more economical for them to be pulled from Flint because of mileage, that is, in fact, one of the factors. If we pull from the county of Genesee and submitted a plan where to save money, we wanted to pull people from Flint for that fifth division, it's a possibility they might accept that plan, because mileage is one of the factors. That's not the only factor, but that's one of the factors. And I'm telling you, nobody at this point have shaped that plan that you're telling us about, and we're getting half of the story. Now, it's a fact that we submit a plan, and it's approved, and those factors such as mileage is there. Mr. Chapman, let me ask you this question as well. Once you look at those factors that could save money and could possibly be approved by the Supreme Court, do you know of any other district court in the state of Michigan who has come up with what we have, like, a fifth division? We've created a consolidation plan that deals with five judges who will be elected from a geographical area called Flint, and the intent of that had something to do with us electing judges. The majority of them judges down there, four out of five of them is black. And the reason that we kept it as a fifth division is because people would've been in an uproar with the possibility of us losing those black judges. Now we talking jury pool, and it's like pulling hen's teeth, getting a whole ounce. So do you know of any court in the state that has designed this type of division within the district courts?
Well, the answer is that I don't know of any court that's designed it, because the courts don't design it. The legislature designed it. The legislature establishes the election divisions. They're specifically authorized by the Judicature Act. They're commonplace, and I don't have to go very far to find a court, a district that has election divisions. All I have to do is go outside the city of Flint into the sixty-seventh District Court, where that out-county district has had four geographically separate election divisions ever since the court was established in nineteen sixty-nine. Nothing unusual about it.
Okay, so there's nothing unusual about establishing that fifth division. So in this consolidation, those election divisions that you referred to will stay in place. They will also elect their district court judges. Do you know that answer?
Sure.
So, excuse me for saying the courts, but the legislature. The legislature enacted those sections, MCLA thirteen oh one A, and all of that that you named, correct?
That's true.
And the legislature put that in there about submitting our specific plan to the Supreme Court, correct?
Yes.
And the legislature also put in there that one of the factors that you can use in that designation of that jury selection and the submission is mileage, correct?
Well, that's true, but...
I know it's true. So, Mr. Ward Chapman, what I'm asking you is this. If this situation that we had with the five-minute rule, with the motions that I'm sandwiched in between that I wasn't prepared for, if, in fact, once I look at this a little closer, because you didn't mention the stuff, and you didn't talk about the mileage and submitting a plan to the Supreme Court, and you don't know what the Supreme Court will accept or won't accept, do you?
I do know this, Mr. Councilman Mays. I know that the legislature said that you have a countywide jury pool for a district of the first class, and the Supreme Court is not going to approve some plan that says you have a different kind of pool. They are not going to contravene what the legislature has said.
But the legislature did say that within that district of a countywide, you could pick geographical areas and use mileage as a factor and submit a plan based upon those areas, correct?
They didn't say anything that would allow a court to have a jury pool different from what the legislature has mandated.
And so the legislature said that you could use mileage and other factors in order to submit a plan inside of that, correct?
Well, the legislature allows the courts to have a, to develop a plan for dealing with jurors that maybe allows them to be a little more convenient. You can have, like, one person, one trial, one day kind of plan, for instance, or telephone arrangements that if they call in, they can find out if they have to report that morning. These are all kinds of things that you can do for the convenience of the jurors. What kind of variety you might have in one of those plans, I don't know, but I do know this. You aren't gonna have in one of those plans that you have some pool that's different from what the legislature says the pool has to be, and that's the simple point of it.
So, Mr. Chapman, if we had to get more answers from you next week...
Councilman, your time has expired.
Mayor, you indulge me for one more question, because nobody else had none on this issue, Mr. Friedman.
Sure, quickly.
So if you had to give us more detailed legal as it relates to all those factors, but I'm concentrating on one factor, mileage, people driving from Flint, you would be willing to come back and give us more details if we utilize our seven days?
Well...
I just asked a question, is yes or no?
The kind of plan that you're talking about is developed by the court. It isn't developed by... It isn't developed by the city or the county.
Mr. Chapman, would you be willing to come back is my question.
Mr. Councilman Mays, I am willing to come at the bid of this body anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that's got any questions?
On the jury pool, I would want to talk about the employees next.
On any question?
I do have a question.
Councilwoman Galloway?
Mr. Chapman, the merger of these two courts, are they modeled after another court? I know what you're saying about the statute. But is there a merger that has happened such as this one with such a large population as Flint, being the largest population in the county? Is there anything that you know of that would reflect something like this?
In recent years, the State Court Administrator has been recommending... Every two years, the State Court Administrator does a study of judicial resource needs in all the courts, not just the District Courts, all the State Courts, Circuit, Probate District statewide. And they analyze the judicial resource needs as they see it in all of those courts. And in recent years, they have been increasingly recommending changes in various courts. They sometimes recommend additional judges. They sometimes recommend a decrease in judges in the 68th District Court, presently, which has its district, the city of Flint. They already did that some years ago. And we now have, one of the five judges is now set by statute to disappear by attrition. And so the first time any one of the present five ceases to be a judge, the seat will be gone. It won't be filled. So that's an example of decreasing the judges. In this particular instance, in 2013, which is the last biennial study by the State Supreme Court, they looked at the 67th District Court, and they looked at the 68th District Court. And they said, "We think that a good answer here is to consolidate the districts." And I can't, I just can't tell you whether they've, whether that's how common that has been as a recommendation. That was their recommendation here. And I just don't, I just haven't looked at...
And the only reason why I was asking that is, and I understand the consolidation, I just was wondering, again, with the population that Flint has, as it relates to the rest of the county. I don't even know if the rest of the county, I don't know the population of the rest of the county. I don't know if they're equal to, or they, I just was wondering...
Rest of the county is higher population.
Okay. I just was wondering, had that ever come up? Or would that be something that you're thinking they wouldn't have even considered because it's already under statute?
Well, it's governed by statute.
No, 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 I realize...
But all I'm saying is, I haven't reviewed all of these actions that have taken place in other places in the state, so I just don't have the... I think what you're saying is, have they recommended, and as the legislature adopted, a district consolidation involving a community this size? I just don't know.
No, and maybe I'm not articulating my question well enough. I was just wondering, had they considered the way that the jury pool... And the reason why I ask is because we have one of the judges here with us on the day that we voted to postpone this.
Mm-hmm.
And he was under the impression that it was a simple fix because there's already something in place that allows them to pull from the residents of the city of Flint. And I guess I'm just a little surprised that he wouldn't understand the statutes better to think that with there being a consolidation, it would be that big of a deal. I guess that, I mean, that he thought that it shouldn't...
I don't know why, I don't know why he thought that, but I think these statutes that I've passed out to you give you the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kincaid?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to just switch gears for a minute to ask a question to Attorney Chubb, who sent a memorandum to us on behalf of the city of Flint in 1600 and 1799, that there have been some amendments to their contract. And my only question, has the union leadership signed off both 1600 and 1799 on this MOU for the changes to their contracts?
No, they haven't yet. I spoke with both of the presidents, with Sam Muma and Don Lewis, and we came up with this agreement, but they have yet to effectuate it.
When you mean effectuate it, I spoke to President Muma, and that in order to effectuate it, it has to go before its membership. But he was in agreement with the changes to this contract, is that?
Yeah, that's exactly right. And the contract does require ratification by the members.
And that's what you mean by effectuating the contract?
Absolutely.
But the leadership has agreed both 1600 and 1799 to these changes, is that correct?
Yes, we talked in great detail and made amendments based on their request.
Okay. That's all I needed. Thanks, Mr. President.
I've got Councilwoman Poplar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask Mr. Chapman a question about the District Court. Thank you, Mr. Chapman. My question is, how many employees will be affected by the consolidation that work in 68th District Court?
It's my understanding from Mr. Ambrose that the current count, which includes the judges, is 27. And the memorandum of understanding counts 26.
So, we're basically looking at...
That's exclusive of the judges.
Just a second.
Yeah. Let me see.
Yeah, maybe I can provide some clarification on this.
I can too.
Oh, Tony?
Yeah, I think I can provide some clarification on this. I think that there are 26 employees, but I think you would recount that number different as opposed to affected employees because the judges and their court reporters, which there are five judges, five court reporters, aren't impacted because they have statutorily provided benefits and rights. And so, I think that we really have 16 employees that will be affected and will be subject to these...
So basically, it's 16?
I think that's the accurate...
Okay, since you have those statistics, I hope you have this next question statistic. Out of the 16, how many of those people live in the city of Flint, Michigan?
I couldn't speculate.
Is it any way you can get us, I mean, it's not going to affect my vote, but I think that my constituents and the general public need to know how many out of 16 people live in the city of Flint?
I can...
I would appreciate that.
Information, not tonight, but I'll have it...
Okay. Ms. Ambrose, can he get that information for me? Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has not spoke yet that would like to, Councilman Mays?
Yeah, Mr. President, through you to the counsel. I also talked to Sam Muma this weekend. And Sam Muma told me he wasn't quite satisfied. And he assured me 100% he would call me back and did. So I don't know what Sam Muma told Mr. Kincaid. But I know 100% what he told me as we talked on the phone, and the details that we talked about. And we talked about the details of people with certain years of seniority who couldn't transfer seniority, and they were still negotiating, and he wasn't satisfied. I asked that Sam Muma be here. That's why I want to vote. I don't like secondhand. I like firsthand. And if we vote no, then we have seven days to get the information firsthand about the employees, about the details of the jury pool. And then, it doesn't hurt us to come up with something or come up with nothing. That's where I think that the county commissioners hurt us at, with representatives of the district. We need to find out about these employees. I've talked directly with employees. I've talked to Felicia Milhouse. I've talked to other employees, who I don't know their name, both black and white. I've talked to a white Caucasian employee, female, who told me when they had presented to her something a year or so back, she jumped on it too fast and wished she hadn't. So, I don't know if the employees will ratify this. But I know we have a responsibility as an elected official to those employees and to the courts because if we get a courts up without doing our due diligence and go off of what he say, she say. I talked 100% to Sam Muma, and I didn't hear what Mr. Kincaid heard. But I do know employees will have to vote on it. And I don't believe in first and second hand. I wouldn't care if Mr. Yule, Mr. Crawford, the emergency manager, the city administrator, and Sam Muma came before us in the next three days. Why do we have to go around outside of a council meeting, don't get the information to properly be able to answer to our constituency, and believe what other people say? That just ain't how I do business. So with what I've heard here today, even with the documentation that I asked for, that we couldn't even recess and get and read from Mr. Chapman, I guarantee you 100%, there's a plan that can be submitted from a geographical area with mileage being just one of the considerations that's within the legislature that could be in the MOU. I can also assure you, there are some things for employees that Sam Muma might or might not did, but the employees ain't happy with some of that. We are the leaders here, and I know how my vote will go. My vote will be to disapprove. And guess what? What is the penalty if we don't come up with nothing? But this meeting was called because some of my colleagues said, "Let's go and use all the time we needed." And we still have another seven days. And if Mr. Ambrose acted in good faith, if Sam Muma acted in good faith, and if Mr. Yule and others who developed this MOU acted in good faith, they would come before us, and we would be able to ask questions and get information about employees and the details. That's good faith. They got us looking foolish because ain't nobody here to speak for themselves, and we supposed to accept what some people say. And I'm telling you 100%, Sam Muma didn't tell me what he told Mr. Kincaid. I don't know when we talked, but I sure enough talked to him too since we dropping names.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to...
Just a point of information, Mr. President. I talked to Mr. Muma at 11:45 today before I went to lunch. I specifically asked him some questions that I had some concerns that had not been presented to us, that I had shared that information with Mr. Ambrose after the meeting. And Mr. Muma said that those issues were addressed in the 1699 contract as well as in 1799. And that he was satisfied, Sam was, 1600 was satisfied with taking this agreement to his membership for ratification. So, I'm only repeating because I asked Mr. Muma if he was going to be here tonight. He can't be here because he's at a dinner. And I specifically, because I had concerns, I reached out to Mr. Ambrose and raised my concerns with Mr. Ambrose about some things that needed to be amended in the employees' contract, and they're in here. And Sam has agreed to take this to his membership. So that tells me that he's in support of this, otherwise he wouldn't take it to his membership. And I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. Muma told me...
Councilman, Mays, this will be probably our last five minutes.
Mr. Muma told me that the negotiations and stuff couldn't be talked about because of negotiations, and it wouldn't be fair to his membership. And that's what he told me on Saturday. And it makes sense to me that you don't discuss delicate negotiations with councilpeople before you give it to the membership. I used to be a union man myself. So it's a lot of he said, she said, this, that, and the other. And it make a whole lot of sense what Mr. Muma told me about informing the membership prior to talking about delicate communications across the table with councilmen and others. So maybe your relationship and communications with Mr. Muma is different from mine. But I take people at their word at what they tell me and what they say. And being a union person myself, I know what he meant by not discussing delicate communications. As a matter of fact, there was some opportunity for some things with the county that could have been did. And those things with the county and loosening up that policy would allow employees from the city to go into the county because of county policy. You got county employees that's on layoff, that didn't work with the court. You got county employees who work with the court. And then, the third chance would be our 68th District Court employees. I know way more about them employees than you think I know or don't know. It's just a matter that the parameters that the president has put us under to vote on this, and the lack of the people here who should provide us with real knowledge rather than hearsay is missing. And for those reasons, I'll call for the question and ask that my colleagues do what's best, our due diligence, get good information from people straight up, and then make a decision. And if we come up with something fine, which I see how to do it, and if we don't come up with nothing, I don't want to be put in the same position as others who didn't ask the right people questions and didn't do it. And guess what y'all told me? Let's use all the time. We have seven more days. Thank you.
Can we have roll call, please, on the question?
This is the call for the question.
We're taking a roll call on the question, yes.
On the question or the call for the question?
On the question.
So this "no" means we disapprove it?
That would be correct.
Because he made, they made a motion in affirmative. So a "no" vote is the way I'm going. A "yes" vote would be just approve what they done put out.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
The vote is five "yes" for "no."
Motion carries.
Mr. President, I need to be excused.
Uh, okay. See you later. Next item on our agenda tonight. Let me get back up to the top. Uh...
Excuse me. Mr. President, so we done with this now?
We're done with the District Court piece, yeah? We have no appointments, and we have no further resolutions. We've already acted on ordinances for first reading. We have no ordinances for second reading. Now is the time set aside for public speakers?
Mr. President, before we go to public speaking, Mr. Ambrose, will you stick around for council discussion?
Let's get through public speakers, and then we'll see what happens.
Beg your pardon?
So let's get through public speakers, and we'll see what happens after that.
How many speakers do we have?
I don't know.
We have about...
Madam Clerk?
We have about five.
Five?
Yes. The first one?
Yep.
The first speaker is Mr. R.L. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell? Mr. R.L. Mitchell?
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. President. I'm R.L. Mitchell. Live at 759 East Linden Street. Uh, Mr. President, what you just said about the... Uh, Mr. President, what you just said about the, about the, uh, the judges over there, five judges and there's five black judges and one white judges in the county. Uh, like I said last week, I was invited to, um, a court hearing over there. My significant sister wanted me to go with her. I was put out because I wasn't known, and they, anyway, I asked her one question. You're not supposed to tell what the jury about, but she, she told me it was the police was on trial and the police was wrong and, and she had to be the, one of them, uh, cops in blue about a gun charge, be around here shooting peoples and then, but she wasn't supposed to tell. She said, "You gotta give me some room to breathe." So I went home, she sent me out that night because she was upset because she couldn't find me in the room up sixty-eight district court over there. And you trying to make Mays go to sixty-seven district court with, with Judge Perry at making up his court out of a canyon roof court and he, and you know good and well, anybody can see that stuff. And anyway, I found a letter in my mailbox saying I was invited to another hearing to sixty-eight district court. And you gotta be a, a good person, have a, with a good record. And they had mileage on there from my house to the courthouse. I said, "Seven miles," and they pay you pretty good for two days. And I don't even have a car, but they still paid me. But analyzed me, but they ain't let me, uh, be a jury to execute somebody at the stand actually talk to you, actually like you doing Mays. Like, anybody can see that, but now you, uh, trying to start this county stuff, this outside peoples don't want Flint to go outside and charging for gas bills because it gonna be a huge check. Anybody can see that, this man here won't, wouldn't take time out to let, to take copies for Mays and analyze this stuff and all these institutions look like Scott getting upset talking about he got to go because he wanted to convert it and nobody stayed and everybody asked you permission, you say, "Yeah, let him get on out of here." Anybody can see that, like this wicked junking, these country bunker shabs over there and Burton chairs. Reap, ah, my significant other's making amends at me every time she look at me, I can't talk.
Mr. Mitchell, your time's expired.
Hey, wait a minute, sir.
Thank you for your time tonight. Have a seat. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Barbara Griffith Wilson. Ms. Wilson?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Griffith Wilson and I reside at two zero two six Wymanus Avenue, Flint, four eight five zero three. One of my concerns is in regard to lose, is, excuse me, one of my concerns is in regards to the employees in the sixty-eighth district losing their jobs and having to reapply after having worked for maybe ten or fifteen years. And so they have to reapply as if they are just starting to look for work. That's a concern with me. And another one I'm concerned about is that when they re-align the courts and they do whatever they need to do, I'm concerned about people being tried by a jury of their peers. I know that someone isn't, probably someone in the room can tell me that it can't happen this way and it can't happen that way, but I just recently was in Marion County and I witnessed a man receive three and a half to ten years for supposedly scratching out the date of a recall petition of the mayor. And he was not tried by a jury of his peers. It was found out that the people who were jurors, jurors, they lived in the county of Marion all over, but they definitely were not his peers because they didn't look like him and they had no empathy for the situation or for the plight. And this man was fighting for us to be able to vote the way we want to vote for or against a mayor. But because Whirlpool and the other entities in the city said that you take what we give you, this is what he, he ended up with and not a jury of his peers. And I just recently witnessed last week where the same man was brought back to court. And this time, they want to charge him eighteen hundred dollars because the mayor came to, to, to testify and he claims he lost eighteen hundred dollars worth of pay for that day for being on the stand for two or three minutes. These things can happen. They can happen and they can happen in this city as well as Marion County. And I think that someone needs to be a guardian and look out for the people's rights because it's one thing to sit up in a seat and be able to look outwards, but it's another thing to be among the people who are actually feeling the, the fire. And so I want to know if this city is, well, not the city, but if the city council is going to do its due diligence and make sure that things are the way they're supposed to be. Because, um, I know you don't like to hear this and I know people say, "Oh, get over it, get over it." But this country is fast heading towards the way it used to be in the nineteen fifties, pre-civil rights days. We're headed back that way. You can see it. Stevie Wonder can see it and he's blind. So, uh, those are my concerns. Those are really my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Your time has expired.
Oh, another thing.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Can I have just a minute? Just one minute?
If you can sum it up quick.
Okay, I, I wanna, I want to understand why city council is set up so we come up here and speak about what we're concerned about after you guys have taken votes.
Good question.
Why things don't come up for us and, and, and you guys don't vote until after we just, we say what we got to say? Because actually what it is, you're not listening to the citizens, you're just letting us fire off stuff.
Thank you. And we're taking steps to rectify that. And if you're here next Monday, you'll see a copy of the rules that changes that. Uh, next public speaker?
The next speaker is Mr. Chris Del Maroni. Mr. Del Maroni.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Chris Del Maroni. I live in Flint, Michigan. Um, you know, the, the vote you just took this evening was, uh, I'll say, a tough one, an important one. And, uh, obviously, you know, supposedly will save the city of Flint some money. But my concern is, and from what I have heard, is that after the courts are consolidated, that then a new court will be built in downtown Flint. And there'll be an expense associated with building that new court. And that'll be borne by the residents of Flint and Genesee County. So on one side of the equation, we have eight million dollars that we're going to save. On the other side of the equation, we don't know what that cost will be. So as important as the vote was, no matter which way it went, it was made, I believe, without full information from the county and the city and others in power who may know those costs or approximate cost. There's been a great deal mentioned in the paper about a jury of one's peers. And Mr. Mays, from the first ward, you said you had a jury of your peers. And maybe you could explain to the people who was on that jury? Because I sat in on a couple of days of the, of that court hearing and I don't believe that they were all black men from the city of Flint, college educated, who sit on city council. So you said you got a fair trial in Flint. Others have said that you can't get a fair trial from a jury pool outside of Flint. And I would say to that person, I as a white person, how would I get a fair trial in Flint then? Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mrs. Sarah Hosky. Mrs. Hosky.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Sarah Hosky. I live in Clive, but it has to do with this deal that's been in the paper. And I have talked to a councilman about it and he said that I could come tonight and speak to you. Ambassador Park that has had no water for two years, that, um, I have been trying and so has my granddaughter been trying for two years to get someone to listen to us. We have called the mayor's office. We've gotten no response. We have called, I have talked personally to Deb Cherry at the Union Hall at Christmas time. She told me to call the mayor. It didn't do any good. We've called the health department. They want no part of it. We've called, uh, every agency that we could possibly think of. We called the treasures department. We called the water department. We called all this. They've been hauling water for two years. And yet, Channel Twelve was out there one time when it was raining like crazy where they couldn't take any kind of pictures at all and nothing was done after that. It was just pushed off to the side again. I left a message for Councilman Mays. I never heard back from him. I did talk to Councilman Nelson. He was very, very nice to me and explained some things to me and that he found out by accident what's been going on for two years that we've been trying to bring to the Flint council to let somebody know what's going on. I don't like the idea that my daughter lives there. I have tried for two years to get her to move out. She says the money situation and there's no way we're on disability. We can't help her. I just seems to me, it's awful funny that all these agencies that I've tried to reach out to and my granddaughter has tried to reach out to all for two years, nobody wants to talk to us. Nobody wants to go over there and see what that mess looks like and it's a mess. I tell my daughter over and over again, "Pigs would not live over there. It's so bad." And yet, she's been there for two years. They're both handicapped and they're on disability. I don't know what else to do. I mean, I'm at the end of my rope. We have done all we can do. And if it hadn't been for Councilman Nelson, I wouldn't have even known about coming down here because I didn't think I could speak. But he's not even her third, her ward commissioner. He just happened on it by accident. So what's going on? Doesn't one hand talk to the other hand and don't they understand what the plight is of these people that are living there? There's only nine families left in that place out of a hundred and fifty.
Thank you.
So I appreciate you letting me talk. Thank you.
Your time has expired.
Yes. Our last speaker is Mr. Tony Palladino.
Mr. President, thank you. Hi, everybody. Tony Palladino, thirteen eighty-three Washington Avenue. I really didn't know why I was coming tonight. Lot of things on my mind. First of all, I want to know why are we paying taxes on parks? Who came up with this light tax? My properties are so far behind right now because of this tax and I have two streetlights, two streetlights on my street. One of them doesn't work. I've talked to Keeney and all kinds of people. Another question, I asked the mayor at this, uh, this, uh, meeting we was at, how did my college get to build a, a ball diamond down in our park without any of us knowing it? And it's not the fact that they built a ball diamond. It's beautiful, but us as residents cannot use it. They put a gate around it and shut us out of something I've been playing on since I was a kid. There's some people that are a little frustrated about it. There's no answers being given. Maybe I'm not asking the right question. I think a lot of our assets are being given away. And the one thing I think you're mostly missing are the residents themselves. I'm not a college. I'm not the land bank. I'm not a church that's tax-free. I'm a resident. I'm one of your greatest assets. I say in me, but there's a lot of us. There's still some of us left. I'm being isolated over in this little neighborhood. Nothing's being done over there. I used to run as the president of the neighborhood over there. I let it go to see what's going to happen and guess what? It's gone. There's only viable things in there, it's churches, tax-free, land bank. And here's the other thing, this street tax, I don't get that at all. I mean, for a lot, if I let this lot go back, who's going to get it? The land bank's going to get it. What are they going to do with it? They're going to pay people to take care of it. I own that lot. I'm losing it because of taxes on a light that are not even there. They're older than I am. There's not been one thing done in my neighborhood in fifty years. And I'm just standing here, it's like nothing. I mean, you know, the only thing we got going for is the colleges. Well, I don't go to college. We're giving away Atwood Stadium. Why? Why don't you keep a piece of that? When they fill it, we get a percentage of it. Just like the parks. I mean, we're paying a forestry department that's not there. We're paying for a college that doesn't do nothing for me personally. Sure, it's keeping their area clean. These are things that we need to look at. You guys are forgetting about the residents. And guess what? We're leaving faster than you can clip your clipboards. We're done. And this water situation, it's one year this Saturday. I have not seen anybody on this council out there. Now, maybe it's not affecting you the same way. And you've seen me rant and rave. It's because we're hurt. We're residents. We need you guys out there, even if it's just to stand and say hi. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that our last speaker?
It's our last speaker.
All right. We are done with speakers and we're on to council discussion. Councilman Mays?
It would still fail, Chris, voting for. Yeah, Chris, I heard what you said about a vote and a motion to reconsider because Scott voted and left, but it would still maybe fail four to four, but it's worth doing for the people. Maybe I will. But I want to say this. Mr. Ambrose, may I ask questions? You said once we read this emergency manager order number three with the city administrator, then you would ask her questions. Is this proper?
I think I'd prefer to do it as an agenda item on a committee, the whole.
Cal?
As the commi, so he want to address the city administrator order on an agenda item and the committee as a whole on Monday.
That's what he said.
And so whatever else is on that agenda, you know, within four thirty, I hope that I'm giving adequate enough time, unlike tonight, but whatever we do is fine. They're going to do what they want to do. I'll talk about what I found out. Number thirty-two, in the event the mayor or the council fails to perform any duty or take any required action after having been afforded a reasonable opportunity to do so. Who defines reasonable? The city administrator may perform the duty or function of the mayor or the council upon approval of the board. In other words, I believe that this is the duties of a mini emergency manager. And I don't believe it's a good faith gesture when people was talking about, "Come on, let's go along, let's pass the seven-point plan, let's do all they ask, even consolidate and throw away the courts because we just want them to transition out." It ain't no such thing. They hold on, they stay holding on, and they transfer powers from one emergency manager to another and then to the city administrator. An investigation, number thirty-one, an investigation by the city council is contemplated by charter three dash two oh five and three dash two oh six, including the power to subpoena witness, shall be subject to the city administrator's review and approval. Now, they done put a charter revision commission in place, but that ain't good enough. They want to change the power of the charter by emergency manager order. That's not acting in good faith. We want to give you more pay responsibility. That more pay is to shut up. That's hush money. Shut up, don't question our orders, go along to get along, pass everything we say and we steady changing the charter by order and saying, "Y'all, we don't even trust y'all to do what you can do. You can't use your subpoena power, you can't do due diligence because we don't, we talk all that team player and partner stuff, but y'all going to fail. Y'all ain't got no sense. We got to take these powers." And so now we pray and hope that the charter revision commissioners that we tried to put in place wrongfully will shape the charter to fit these type of orders. And guess what the city council do and the mayor? We two, three weeks away from an election and ain't nobody said nothing. I've been saying everywhere I can, I hope they vote for Nair Sharif, Barry Williams, Ms. Victoria McKenzie, Cleoria McGee, Melanie Mabbett, Mr. Metline, Mr., what's his name, Mr. Davis in the fifth ward? Mr. Metcalf and possibly Brian Locken. It's people who I don't want them to vote for. You vote for nine. This city council is sitting, letting them, whether it's intentionally or unintentionally, change the charter and give our powers to a city- change the charter and give our powers to a city administrator by order. I asked Mr. Ambrose, when do this go into effect? He said immediately. It was signed four ten fifteen. And now we still trying to get dialogue a week or two later. And the irony of that is this. Somebody told me, whether it's true or not, we gonna research it legally. When they put these emergency manager orders in place, they stay for two years or so. I don't even know if we know. But however long they stay, can you transfer the emergency manager power to the city administrator after he's gone? Four thirty-six might give him the opportunity to give it to a desert knee when he's here. But do they give it to him when they leave? Will he disappear tomorrow or the next day before we can discuss whether or not, like it says at the end, this order may be amended, modified, repealed, or terminated by subsequent order issued by the emergency manager? I don't know if the transition board will issue an order. I just read two of them. All appointments made pursuant to paragraph fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen shall serve at the pleasure of the city administrator. Sixteen is the police chief, the fire chief, the director of finance, planning, economic development, chief legal officer. They don't serve at the pleasure of the mayor no more by charter. They serving at the pleasure of the city administrator. Is that a manager form of government? That's a lot of changes that ain't nobody looked at and we living effectively of that now. Ain't that something? And we now got to wait and hope that we can discuss this in detail Monday. And so I'll wait to see. So my point is this for tonight. We are a team. They didn't discuss this with the team. We ain't really on that team. Is the mayor and the council president a team? I don't know who discussing something behind closed doors because Scott said, he talked to Sam Muma and then left. You can't hardly get people to stand before the council in a public transparent arena, but the president, um, Scott and him and others is talking and meeting. I'll try to do stuff open and in public and transparent. No matter what other people do, I'm opposed to the city administrator having the chief of police serve at her pleasure, the city attorney, so forth and so on. I'm opposed to the city administrator approving whether or not we can do our due diligence to investigate under the charter. I'm opposed to the city administrator having any power over the council and the mayor. And I'm hoping that this city council and the elected leaders will understand that we have a most important election coming up to our governance, um, in the next couple of weeks as it relates to the charter revision commission. Cause it all goes hand in hand. And I'm not gonna go along to get along. And Mr. President, I would like to make, like to make a referral to the legal department. And I want them to define for me what type of power that four thirty-six allows the emergency manager to designate while they're here and after they're gone. And I want also want the city attorney to detail for me what type of procedure it takes to change the charter. Because I've seen nothing here that makes me believe that the governor or nobody else has changed the charter as it relates to emergency manager order number three. So maybe by, um, the committee as a whole, we can get some feedback on how you change charter under Public Act four thirty-six.
Thank you, Councilman.
And it can die for lack of second, but Mr. Bill Maroney, you're right. I move for reconsideration on the consolidation of the court motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Mr. President, through you to the city attorney.
Uh, there is no city attorney here, but I will read rule twenty-two point one. And it's a motion to reconsider. Any decision of the city council may be made by any council person that voted in the affirmative on the motion in question. So I would say that your motion is improper and I'm not going to recognize it.
I knew that. I knew that, but I did it anyway.
Councilwoman Poplar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things. First of all, Ms. Husky, uh, the plight of the people that's over where you were talking about, your daughter. If we had our human relations department that was run very well, very organized, very excellent by Mrs. Rosa Murphy, those people would not be in the situation that they are in. Ms. Murphy and her staff were in the business of removing people and putting them in decent And I still feel that when we, or not we, but the administration got rid of, emergency manager got rid of, the human relations department, it was one of the worst human tragedies to happen to the city of Flint. So this is one reason why you see people in houses, in apartments, in trailer parks. They can't go anywhere because they don't have any real true help from people that are concerned about people. The people that's in charge of our city right now are concerned about numbers and dollars. And they certainly don't have a face. So I feel for you, I really do, and your daughter. Next. There is a new Kroger store being built in Royal Oak, Michigan. A twenty-five million dollar project that will be bringing four hundred jobs to that city. Shame on the Kroger company. You have left the people in the city of Flint who needed you most. And you're giving to the people who have some of the best comforts in life that's possible. Shame on the Kroger company. If any of you know the CEO, contact Kroger and say shame on you. You took from the poor and you are giving to the rich. That's what it boils down to. My last note. Thank God for a group of young men that have adopted Sarvis Park. Thank God for a group, one of them is from New York City, that has come to partner and work with us in Sarvis Park. On April the thirtieth, we will be having at Sarvis Park, the corner of Winona and Myrtle, Winona and Keller, Myrtle and Weisner, that stretch. We will be having food, free, free music, a light show, a parade through the neighborhood. The parade through the neighborhood will show some of the abandoned houses that will be boarded up with artwork. So I'm asking the community to please come out and to share these things with us. Believe it or not, there are some people watching the city of Flint who have a heart, once again, for the people. They don't see the number. They don't see the dollar sign. Food will be prepared and paid for by the Walmart company. So I'm just asking you to come out, show your support for the second ward, and see some of the positive things that are happening in the second ward. We have a new church. Pastor Harris has promised me that new things will happen in the second ward with the Saints of God Church, working with the people and the community. They will get out of the walls of the church and they are going to work in the streets. We have additional houses coming down in the civic park area. When you clean up some things, it helps lift people up off the ground. And the people in the city of Flint have been on the ground much too long. And they've been stepped on, kicked around like an old rug much too long. But the ones that have done this, please remember, there is a payback day for you. I may not know it and I may not see it. But what goes around comes around. And it comes a whole lot heavier than when it left you. So I wanna thank you, thank you, Mr. President, for your time. Thank my council members.
Thank you. Councilman Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna thank Ms. Husky for coming tonight. And I must say that Councilman Mays is the one who enlightened me on the situation. But when I went out there, what I saw was just not acceptable, um, of how they were living. And so I got busy calling different departments, the mayor, the administrator assistant. We cannot afford to allow anyone to live under those conditions. They had to go, me and Councilman Mays went to the cemetery where they got, they get their water from and it's out of a pump. It is not acceptable in any means. I will not, I cannot stand for that. Uh, it's not acceptable. And I told the mayor, the administration, and we've got to do something. Megan Hunter, I got with her, we need to get those people help. So I think, and I shared it with some of my colleagues and they, they're supporting. Anything that they can do, they offer to do so. It's just not acceptable off Door Highway and Wester Road. It is a forgotten city, a forgotten people. I, I, I walked in and they love their homes. They, they really want to stay there, but they cannot because there's no running water. The blight is just not acceptable. And so our job is to clean it up and get those people to safe, a clean environment with running, acceptable drinking water. It, it, it's just deplorable what I seen. My last thing, and it is my ward, and it is, and, and, and I'm not pointing the finger at anybody. I'm on the watch now and it's my job to clean it up. And so I will. I'm not looking back at who had it before or what. That's not important. What's important now, that they need help. The last thing, and I would agree with Councilman Mays on the names for, um, that charter revision, all but one, I keep it real. I am not supporting Mr. Larkin because his ideals are not my ideals. You, you, you understand what I'm saying? And I, and I think he's a wonderful person, but the vision that I have and the vision that he has is different. All the other names are good to go. And with that, Mr. President, I'm finished.
Thank you, Councilman. You got Councilman Davis?
I have an issue. First and foremost, thank you, President, and thank for all the ones that attended. Thank you, Mr. Ward Chapman, for coming and giving a presentation. My concern and the reason why I said no, um, to this merger is because to me, even though we're gonna save money, and I think saving money is a great thing, and I think that it's something that we should look forward to for a rainy day or any other day so that we don't go back into a receivership. On the other hand, I look at compromising jobs that people who work in this city, because the city is only as strong as the income and property taxes that we receive. And I honestly believe that some of the things that we implement or that we vote on when it comes to the finances of this city, sometimes it can be looked at as a Band-Aid. The only way that we can ever rise above the conditions that we are in right now is we have to come up with a strong economic and development plan. We have to create jobs and bring revenue into this city. Because history never lies. When people was working in the seventies and the eighties, we didn't have the problems that we have now. We had a good tax base, which was by the General Motors, but because General Motors is gone, doesn't make us, uh, unable or, uh, or crippled where we cannot come up with some form of employment or some form of revenue. All we have to do is travel over this country and look at economic and development plans around this country and invite some of those developers to come here. And look at all this land that we have and invite them to come here and say, hey, can you bring some jobs here? Once again, and I'm gonna always iterate this, we have fifty to fifty-four thousand minorities in this city and eighty to eighty-eight percent of them live below poverty. We have a third of this city with felonies on their record and are not working in the workforce. And until we can address those issues, we're gonna always be in the position that we in. Cutting, we can't cut ourselves out this situation. We can't merge ourselves out of this situation. The only way, the only cure that we can ever embark upon is we have to find a way to create jobs and generate revenue. And I'm gonna always stand by that. I would never veer or wave, wave, or persuade away from that, um, from that notion. Dealing with the water situation and the, and the mobile home part, I don't know how the city can help in that situation. I can bring up an imagination and say how the city can help. I can just throw a theory in the air and say, well, why don't we just forgive them of that water debt that they have over there and start them off on a new payment plan and put that burden on the owner who owns that trailer park and put it on his taxes? You know, or somehow, some way, I just don't know. I've never been tongue-tied where I couldn't say how it can be helped. But I don't like giving false hope. If it was me, I probably would say forgive it and move forward, start you guys off in that trailer park because water is a necessity, something that people need on a daily basis. It's required on a daily basis to drink sixty-four ounces of water a day. But also take a nice shower or a nice bath every day for hygiene purposes. But I really just don't know how the city can help under these critical and, uh, critical situations that we're suffering up under. But I do say this much, if it's anything that I can do, if somebody come up with a viable plan to help, I'm for it. I have no problem in being a part of it. I'm just stuck at, I'm, I'm at a stalemate right now because I just don't know what the city would do to help over there. I really don't. Giving bottled water, it's a Band-Aid. You know, we have to be solution-driven. And I think that's one of the problems that we have been suffering from under the water conditions, under trying to go into financial solvency, and every other issue that we're suffering from. We just run out of boxes of Band-Aids. But the only way that we can, and I'm gonna reiterate it again, to resolve the problems that we're going through, we have to get these men and women off the street and get them into the workforce. And until we do that, we're gonna always be stuck at point A. We can imagine ourselves going to point B and point C and maybe point Z. In theory, it sounds good, but realistically, it's not good. I just think that that's what we have to do. If, so I yell, I yell my right to Mr. Councilperson Winfrey.
Thank you, Councilman Winfrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I wanna say thank you to Mr. Ward Chapman for all of the information you provided for us regarding the consolidation of the courts. And to my, my colleagues and everyone else, I came down here tonight pretty much leaning towards an affirmative vote. Because I talked to people over the weekend and I've talked to people- because I talked to people over the weekend, and I've talked to people who are part of this consolidation system, and a great deal of them say that it's a good deal. But then there were a number of them that had, there was a bit of ambiguity. And I think the biggest part that changed my mind, or at least made me pause, was when my colleagues, one was saying one thing that one of the union officials had said to him, and then the one that was saying the other thing. And I think it's important for me to make good decisions based on good information. So when I didn't hear what I needed to hear on, from sixteen hundred and, what is it, seventeen ninety-nine, union memberships, I, I would like to know how that the majority of those folks feel about this consolidation, and then it will help me to give an affirmative vote. I do believe that we have a responsibility of saving money. Eight million, eight point four, I believe, million dollars over ten years is, is a pretty, is a pretty good bit of money to, to save. That's good. But I still think there's the human element that we have to, that we have the responsibility to be concerned about. And nowadays, finding a job, especially when you're in a system and you've been part of that system for a long time, may not be easy to find. And then along with finding a job, certainly the hidden costs, those benefits. Not everybody's giving up the kind of benefits that people lose nowadays. So those are the things that I'm thinking about. Again, I'm still, I, I, I can rest tonight because I think that my vote was the right vote. And I'm looking forward to much more discussion about this, even though it passed tonight. I'm not upset with anybody. We're all members, and we're all serving the people in this city. But I just came down here, and my mind was changed because of this conversation between my colleagues from one member of the union, and it wasn't the same. That's all I have to say, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Van Buren.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Mine's is gonna be very short, but it's gonna be important because in a couple of weeks, we're gonna have an election on May fifth. It's gonna be a very, uh, short election in a way. There's only two questions on there. One for proposal one, if you vote yes or no, and also for selecting members for the Charter Commission that they may, from what I'm hearing, may be involved for several years to review and decide what type of changes they'll be presented to the voters to accept those changes or whatever for a new charter. The, um, what I support is that we at least get out and vote, get to know who those are that are running. A number of them are very active in the community. They know what's going on. If you have an opportunity to meet them or call them or read something about them, I would suggest that. But you can only vote up to nine, and those will be the ones selected May fifth. If you want to make it easier, you should consider taking out an absentee application. It's very easy to get. You can, uh, city clerk is here. You can either call their office to have one sent to you, or you can go on the internet. There's an application there. Make a copy, just send it in, and a ballot will be sent to you. That'd give you more time to consider the names, but at least you voted. And also with proposition one, we really didn't get into that type of discussion. There's a lot of yeses and nos as to what people are supporting. And if you do not support it and you do not vote, it probably will pass. So you, it's important. Each vote counts. And we always have a small turnout, but we can't make change. We can't make things happen the way they should if we're not out there to support it. And a lot of times, people will be upset with some of what goes through, but they didn't even participate in the process. So again, it's, it's only a small election, if you want to call it that, but it's still an important, each one of our elections are important when it comes before the citizens and asking for your support on certain things. So again, there's still time to get absentee ballots. And you can even stop in the office during working hours and get one, fill it out then, or take one home and then mail it back. But again, some of the names that my colleagues mentioned are very good names. So please, make some decisions. This is going to affect us for a long time. Our last one was, what, about forty, fifty years old, I think? And Flint's, Flint's changing, but we've got to make sure we have people who are gonna take a look and make some good decisions and choices that will be presented to the rest of the city. Thank you.
Okay, just two quick things for me. Can we put a discussion item on planning and development that deals with private entities utilizing space on a permanent basis within parks? I think Mr. Palladino's got a legitimate concern there, you know, especially over at Kersley Park where Mott College is, you know, they're on both ends of the park. It's getting smaller. So access there, so if we can have that put on the agenda. And then the last thing for me, I agree with just about everything my colleagues here said tonight about the Charter Commission. I, I am supporting candidates that are looking for a strong mayor form of government. Basically, Councilman Mays slate with the twist that Councilman Nelson put on it. So maybe there's something that we are in total agreement with here tonight, too, so.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Can we put a referral on the, what we got coming up Wednesday, public works?
Public works and planning.
Yeah, I wanna see, Mr. Nelson, I'm thinking about a referral as it relates to public works or planning. I wanna make sure we get a list of, I talked to Doug Wildin, of some available property. And it might not be to either committee, but I'm kinda wanting some discussion as it relates to the people in the mo- mobile home park.
Yeah.
And I wanna see what type of inventory we got. We got one person matched up with somebody helped him with a house. I talked with Mr. Wildin, and they had got some from Salem for two thousand dollars. And, you know, the one I bought on Russell was three, and I paid a hundred and thirty-nine. So I think with nine people and with the work of, I whispered to Mr. Ambrose, and, you know, I'm whispering to Councilperson Nelson, but I really want the lady to know that I really do take heed. I apologize if I missed a call. I try to return calls. So I got thick skin. I came and whispered. I ain't mad at you, but I still value my reputation.
We'll put, we'll put that on planning and development then as a discussion item.
All right.
About working with the land bank to maybe try to find a solution.
So should I move to adjourn, or if I, I don't want to, if other people got something to say?
Our cow committee, our cow committee on Monday is gonna be devoted to two things then, and that's gonna be order number three discussion, and it's gonna be budget projections. And the majority of it is gonna be the budget projection memo that the emergency manager sent to us on Saturday. That's gonna be the majority of the discussion.
Well, I would hope Mr. Ambrose would come to that discussion with an amending and modifying type of mind, maybe.
I wouldn't hold my breath. We should have a, uh, a motion to adjourn that. It's been moved, is it?
Second.
Moved and supported. Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Popla?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, zero no to adjourn.
Motion carries.